Using that material, if we're not going to have enough, you're sure we have enough to do the two lakes, if that mid-tower's doing, and to provide enough for anything on the flow.
Yes, because the conveyance at Stony Brook is about 900 feet of material on the rolls, so that's not a big consideration, and it's 300 feet there, so 1,200 feet total. And with what Mr. Tinkles is looking at over here, this project, it would really only take about three rolls to do that whole area.
Okay, and you, how many rolls do we have out here?
About 24.
Oh, okay.
And the ponds that they're working on right now, the one over in Callaway Greens is minor as far as material goes, it's about 1,100 feet, just like in Stony Brook, we have covered two.
All right.
Yeah, I think it's one, two, we have opportunities now to leverage that material, we need to do it, because you don't want that stuff sitting out all the time.
No, that's true.
It will all be gone in the next three months.
So, I will second, second Mr. Tinkles' motion for discussion.
May I ask a question or two before we move on?
Absolutely.
Excuse me, Madam Chair. I believe this sets a precedence, because previously this board had decided that we were not going to do these kinds of repairs on the golf course side, even though we own the body of water in both sides. And I'm always cautious about setting a new precedent, so I would like to be convinced that this is absolutely necessary, and I'd like to be convinced that the line of 315 feet is so important. Can you have someone help me there?
May I address?
Go right ahead.
So, I don't think it is a precedence, because the precedence was that we're doing the entire residential side, so we're restoring the entire residential side. This is one small area on a golf course that has extreme erosion, so that is an area that, if the Water Management District were to come to us, we would have to make that repair. So, we're not going and asking to do the entire golf course side, it's an isolated area where you have significant erosion, so I wouldn't argue that that is a precedence that you're setting. The precedence has been you're not touching the golf course sides in general, but this is an isolated instance where you've got severe erosion. I don't think it's the same.
And this is a high-flow, water area?
Very high-risk. Yes.
Arrow-high-flow. All the water of Gateway basically comes through here.
Yes.
And Madam Chair, if I may, in response to Mr. Guy's question, add to that, my understanding is that drop-off is a couple of feet, and typically South Florida doesn't like a drop-off greater than nine inches.
Nine inches, that's right.
Number two, there's case law out there indicating that when you are not in compliance with the permit to that extent, either slope or drop-off, that typical protection from liability for someone falling into a water body may go away because you're not in compliance with your permit. There's a case that found up there where the court refused to dismiss an action because there was an assertion that the slopes were not achieved, or the permit conditions were not met, so to minimize liability is also another factor, besides the hydraulics and flow-water function.
And I agree with you, Mr. Guy, and that was, that was something that we had discussed early on when we started these projects. This particular area, and there's a lot of golf course bank, is of concern because of the flow, the high level of flow that runs through this particular area, it's a bottleneck, and it's, this is going to get worse and worse and worse and worse.
Chris, can you go back at plan view, or scan back one so Bill can see the plan view, just to give you the idea? Bill, there's, there's gives you an idea. We went out there on a boat, and specifically, we're looking at how we can minimize this, and the two endpoints was essentially where the combination of the escarpment and the slope came back close, close to Porta One. We said, "That's it, no sense going any further either direction." So, that's how that was, the limit was tied down to 350.
You and Mr. Guy, I've been following, just quoting from the case mentioned, in the appellate court says, "We conclude that the South Florida Water Management District regulations and permit requirement of slope in this case created a duty which it breached would give rise to a cause of action negligence that may not otherwise be assessed." The engineering and legal perspective is to why this is different, isn't that how the determination is appropriate?
And to add on to that, now we've made this a public, you know, display item, so I'm not putting you on the spot to look for it, I'm saying what I have to say. Just now put that out there as a public item, that is an issue.
Mr. Gafford?
All right, just a comment from an audience. The problem is the escarpment. Is that correct?
It's a huge escarpment, but it's a huge slope.
But if you sculpted the escarpment to go back to Porta One, problem goes away.
We talked about that out there, the problem you run into is going back to reach that, you might go outside the LME very easily.
Then you work with the golf course, it was going to save you a couple hundred thousand bucks?
Well, you still have got to do something in that area, Bob, it's, it's.
Well, not, not, I don't want to be argumentative, but the problem's Porta One.
Yeah, it's not, but it's not a hundred thousand dollars, we're talking about $60,000. $60,000.
Well, if it's only $60,000, then you get the golf course to pay for it.
It's not the responsibility of the golf course.
And it's actually $52,000, right?
True.
$52,608, dollars and fifteen cents.
Yes.
I'll keep in the fifteen cents. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right.
So, that, I have nothing more, and I can certainly stick around, this is a very exciting agenda, but I could probably be more productive back in the office. More than happy to stick around if you'd like.
One question I have is, either you or Chris, do we have an update on tiny contractors over there, or, I'm sorry, property owners over there on Callaway Greens on 119, 121? When do you think the two contractors will be mobilizing to start the actual work on 19 and 21?
That tower's over there right now, working on the small pond.
Or 19?
They're putting the dirt in, and we were out there today.
Okay, I worked over there today.
Right, and as soon as Fisher finishes up across the street, which will probably be in the next week, he'll be over there.
Fisher's got 20 more, or Fisher's got 19, the big one in the middle.
Right. And we also secured these ones from three of the property owners right there on Callaway Greens Drive, so instead of having to go down to the end of the cul-de-sac and mobilize all the people getting their roofs repaired, we'll be working on them.
That was the other question that came up, people were asking, as we go on, how will these ponds, and this is, it depends upon the bidder, I guess, but how many of these ponds will be approached from the boats versus how many in the barges versus how many, I'm guessing that 119, Fisher will go in there and use his little two-yard buckets and drive around the LME and access at those two or three points and not dump a barge in that little pond?
Correct. That will all be done from the shore, and again, the one use that we have is very restrictive on the end by the cul-de-sac, so we have permission and documents from three property owners.
That's how Fisher did 90 over here across the way, and it looks beautiful. And then over in Stony Brook, what was it, 60 or 61?
61.
61. I'm assuming it's the same way, they're going to access it from the shoreline in the LME, they're not going to put a barge in it?
They'll be coming in from the right away on Pedal Brook and doing the same thing, and it works well for them, because running that mini dump back and forth gives a really good compaction.
It does, it does.
Do we still have a boat?
Yes, sir, we do. Hasn't been used much, but if you'd like a tour.
Wouldn't hold much dirt, though, to go up and down those lakes.
Probably couldn't give you a job.
We'll put a big, like a director's chair, and we'll let Tinkles sit in the john boat with a director's chair, and a loud boat.
Thank you.
All right, until next meeting.
Okay, that leaves District Council.
Yes, ahead by a project list, I send the package, agenda package, but in addition, just to give an update on, further update on some of the items that are in there, on Corina, Page Two, it seems like we're moving ahead, I get emails from Charles Mann today, Representative Deise Alonar, that they're signing the documents for the updated conveyance package and the settlement agreement, so that should be delivered to Chris shortly, I guess, hopefully by tomorrow, and hopefully we can make the next agenda to put that to rest. Commerce Lake Drive and Express Court, that's the road that begins east of the district's Commerce Lake Drive section, east of Gateway Boulevard, runs over to Daniel's Parkway. Sean Ellis, an attorney, who also worked at the grocery house in the past, Sean's representing some property owners in the Intelliflex condominium, and not sure about the Daniel's industrial condominium, and they're, they're wanting to know how to achieve, and working with the district, how to achieve conveying that roadway track to the CED. Chris and I had a very productive, I thought, conference call the other day with Sean Ellis and a couple of the property owners and year owners in the Intelliflex and the property manager. And so they were going to look at a possibility, and again, it was just a conversation to induce each other, or something, each other, the possibility of reconstituting the Intelliflex condominium for the work as a part-comerce-part-association for a limited purpose of solely conveying the roadway track to the CED. Chris and I had a brief conversation with them about, the district had not yet decided how to fund any improvements to bring it up to speed, if they were any needed. Chris is sending his group, the next 45 days, I think, we indicated, we would have a report back to the, to Sean and his clients, so they could understand maybe the scope of when it would be necessary, if the board would decide if those property owners need to bring it up to speed, or we'd come up with another alternative funding mechanism. We also talked about the streetlights, they're covered, they are owned by FPL, and it was a 10-year agreement, it was a flat monthly rate, I believe, was the conversation. So, we had this conversation about, okay, from a streetlight perspective, who would replace the streetlights, and if they're FPLs, well, that would be their issue apparently. So, those are some of the things to flesh out, it was a good, very positive conversation, I thought, and hopefully we can move that one along.
That would satisfy the Daniel's Preserve?
Yeah, we talked about the Daniel's Preserve, folks, that they're knocking our dormer off, and then the Intelliflex or the Daniel's industrial, I guess that's another separate condominium, folks, but I think everybody was, it was a good cooperative spirit, there's an engineering firm over there, one of the chairman, there's the engineering firm. So, again, it was very positive, and it was nice to hear that. On the 70/30 split from the Wayback machine, I didn't send you an email, but I had a handout, so the copy to the minutes, I think Mr. Tinkles will see.
Oh, yeah.
I sent a copy to the chairman, this could be for your reading pleasure. This was just, what was the genesis of the 70/30 allegation? And it goes back to August of 1993, you can just read it, it's a little easier later on, that's all this is for.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and I also have copies for when we get to the public hearing. The minutes of February 21st had attached a verbatim transcript of the three or four individuals that appeared that day, and they said that we would make the verbatim record of the comments of the public hearing. I have those of the board between the recess, when we finish this meeting and begin the 5:30 public hearing. You all can just kind of skip through those, read those, refresh your recollection as to what those individuals stated. Have anything else? Feel free to ask any questions.
Slary?
Yes, ma'am.
Start with you.
Thank you. This is, I guess, maybe for the attorney and the district manager, and I have some complaints from residents about the speeding on Gateway, and it's not the speeding, it's that they called Lee County, because they are in Lee County streets, and Lee County told them to call Gateway, and Gateway told them to call Lee County. Is there someone we can get together so that, maybe they can put out one of those scratch and things, you know, that they put in Stony Brook, and maybe we could talk to them to do that?
We had that, no? We have our, we have one, and of course, we couldn't put it up on Gateway.
No, 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 right. That's right.
You know, how are you going to write away from the county to do that? That might be all.
That would just least appease.
Now, when you said the county, did the sheriff's department?
Well, yeah, the sheriff's department, I guess, they said they called Lee County Sheriff's Department, yeah.
This was in Gateway next door, and those people, some of them get out and left field so fast, it's unbelievable. They may have talked to the chairman over there. You don't know who they actually talked to.
Tell them to email Cecil Penderbress.
Every, so the ones who actually talked to me, because after reading that, they came to me and talked to me and asked me, I should tell them that.
Fill in the contact, Cecil.
He'll be, he'll be happy to receive your communications.
He will.
Constituent communications.
Exactly.
I just was trying to, you know, they, it was.
Get a response, yeah?
Yes.
I've received that same complaint from the same person two times about speeding on Gateway Boulevard.
There's no doubt about it, it's ridiculous.
Always on my way here, the people were speeding past me and school buses.
The county isn't going to spend money here when they got a problem.
No, the one school bus was way ahead, we do it pretty well.
Anything else, Mr.?
No, there was just Mr. Guy, anything for the attorney?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, thank you.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you.
Mr. Tinkles?
Thank you.
Moving right along. Consent agenda items, anybody have a consent agenda item they'd like to pull?
I have a couple on the financial statement, manager.
Okay, go right ahead.
Thank you.
And while you're looking for that, anyone else have anything on the consent agenda they want to pull?
Yeah, the minutes.
Okay, both of them or just one of them?
Just one first.
Okay, thank you.
It's only one?
Well, there's minutes of the.
About forty committees.
Yeah.
May I proceed, Madam Chair?
Go right ahead.
Mr. Blue, as I went through the February financial statement, a couple of things popped up, excuse me. On page 41, the general fund statement of revenue and expenditures, if you go to that page.
Chris, can you run 41?
Agenda page 41. It, it appears to me that we may be as much as $174,000 short from the tax collector on our assessments. Do you have a feeling that that, that I am maybe correct or in the ballpark on that?
I'm not sure where you're reading that number.
I'm making that up.
Oh, okay.
If you take the annual budget of $1,337, excuse me, $3,137.
Right.
Where are you at, Bill, on that page? I'm not seeing those.
The first line, special establishment.
Okay, got you.
$3,137.
Yeah, okay.
And you subtract what we've received to date, which is essentially all we're going to get, of $2,964, the difference is about $174,000.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't agree with that.
I'm worried about that.
Yeah, no, I wouldn't agree with that statement, that that's all you're going to get. You're going to get, I mean, this is only through February, you still, yeah, you've still got several months to receive it up and through, whether or not they do it at a tax sale, which wouldn't be till June. So, you know, I, I don't think you're that far behind. I mean, you're ahead of where you were last year at this time, but, you know, there is some differential between the amount that you assess, but I would not see right now as anything troubling.
Will you keep your eye on it for me?
Absolutely, we have, the very last page, I believe, of the, of this, the financials is an assessment schedule devoted just to it.
I saw it, I hear.
So, we track everything on there, and we'll keep an eye on it, and we'll see, I mean, there's not a lot we can do about it, but you can certainly be aware of it.
Right, we need to know about it. Page 47, if you will, please. Now, we're at Pelican Preserve on 002, where we were expecting to get $25,000 in fire impact fees, and so far, we've received nothing.
Nothing.
Now, there's something going on, or more correctly put, there's something not going on, that I think you as a manager or somebody ought to look into, because.
There's plenty of buildings going on.
Yeah, buildings are going on in the city, and these are city impact fees, and we should be participating in those.
If I can make a comment, I think, I think that a lot of that involved with 101, if some of those fees were prepaid a while back, and I'll have to look into our balance, because I know we have, we've been selling them every year when we find a customer for them, so it might be, it's just not showing up here, but I could.
Yeah, we can, and we can do some, we'll review it.
I want to know how much, how much we still have to sell, and how many, but, you know, just tell me, let me know what's going on, it just popped out, it's, it's an important number.
Okay.
On the general fund additions to Reserve Fiscal 19, $156,000, is that what, is that what's pulled over from Fiscal 18?
No, that is, that is additional money that's coming in through assessments from fiscal year 2019, and will be transferred into the capital project fund.
Say that in a different way, it's coming in, what, please?
We are, we are assessing it in 2019.
Yes.
And then it becomes, at the end of the year, it gets transferred into the capital project fund for future years, but it is not part, it has nothing to do with the carry forward from last year.
When you say we're assessing it in Fiscal 19, I hear your words, but I don't know what you mean. To whom are we assessing it?
It's a, it's a part of the general fund assessment total.
Okay.
So, you assess, the, the first number we talked about, that $3 million, within that is $156,000 that is used to go to the capital project fund.
Okay.
It's how that project, it's really how that fund gets, its source of revenue is through that transfer.
Steven on the safe page, where's that $450 we talked about earlier?
I'm, I'm sorry?
The $450 that was from 2018, does that show up on this page?
No, because that number was not assigned to any project, it's just going to be, it's going to be in your fund balance, for the general fund, and we actually had talked about separating it, and we decided against doing that.
On page 76, the vehicle pickup truck, we've had that truck for some time, as I recall, and that column amount, remaining amount planned of $4,900, can that be moved over to budgeted amount remaining to be spent or someplace else, that we can, we know is available to use?
Sure, I'll have to check on that and see if, if there is some additional equipment or something, staff was, I'm not sure, but I could certainly check on that, and if there isn't anything that's planned anymore, then we will zero that column out and then get moved over to the last column.
Thank you very much, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mrs. Slary, you're up.
Okay.
On page 31, remember what I went through when I was going through and to correct our participation in the agenda? Okay, on line 124, where it starts with she, and at line 125, where it says all, I would like that deleted, because I really did not say that, I listened to the tape twice.
The sentence that begins she doesn't think on line 124, and that ends with at all on line 125, that sentence.
Yeah, I talked to the attorney, he said that's what I should say.
I think it can be struck if it doesn't accurately reflect all the statements.
I don't have a problem with that. So, that's what I went through when I, yeah, we remember. Okay. And with that, I'll take a motion to approve consent agenda items 4A, D, C, and D, with the correction that Mrs. Slary wanted in the minutes of 3:21 19.
She'll move.
Okay. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to action items. First one is approved insurance renewal for May 1st.
Real quick, the insurance is up for renewal here May 1st, went through and got quotes with United Healthcare, Florida Blue and everything, and not much came back to, to really any cost savings or anything, so the only real change we did was, in the past, two plans have always been offered, and we are just going to reduce that to one plan, which is the one that everybody had kind of bought up to, the costs did come down this year, so we only had one employee that was participating in the fully funded plan, so we're just going to, that employee would be bumped up to this one and be fully funded through the district. So, that's really the change.
So, is this just for informational, or do you need?
I believe you guys do actually have to make the motion through.
Are you ready for a motion, Mr. Gafford? Madam Chairman and I approve that we approved the renewal with Florida Blue, Crown, Blue Care Plan, 14256, in the amount of $168,399.
You have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Michael, does that take care of the Gardening Group life part?
Yes, it is everything, that is short-term, now, that is essentially estimated, that's at 15 employees, so if an employee was added, obviously, it can fluctuate through the year.
Mr. Schuman, lowway maintenance bids, bid.
Yes, we put the plans that were developed out to bid for the flowway maintenance, and it was a little surprising, we had four bidders show up for the mandatory pre-bid meeting, and we ended up only having one bidder provide a bid in the amount of $125,000 to do that work, and that was Fisher Brothers Industries, and they're the contractor that are currently working with us doing two of the lakes on the pond bank restoration. And that tower was interested in doing it, but he has four other lakes to do for another client, and he is actually going to be doing a little bit of the work as a sub on that job, most notably adjusting the weers that need, and also be working on that Stony Brook conveyance. But the bid was in the amount of $125,000, our recommendation is to approve that as the most responsive bid, and get that work underway.
And we really need to get all of this flowway work done this year, so.
And the big issue with this, of course, is there is no money in the budget for this, we originally had $350,000, that went strictly for storm drain cleaning, and I believe the last discussion the board had is they were looking at some of those unestimated reserves that we had, and that $420,000 to fund this, and I would recommend, though, if we fund it, we do it in the amount of $160,000, because we'll probably get a $15,000 bill to do the flowways out of I-75 and Colonial.
Yeah.
And it'd be nice still to have about a 10% contingency in what they're doing.
Just the DVI work?
Yes, sir. And we're waiting, we're waiting on a formal estimate for them to come, come back from them to do that work, but I'm estimating that area or lower.
We had some concerns that when we only got one bid before, so I'll wait till here if that arises again.
Go ahead. Well, I do have a concern, because I was only one head question. It was held on May 12th, the pre-bid meeting?
March, March 12th, no.
Thank you. All right, can I just?
Anything else?
Nope.
Motion to approve.
They have a motion to approve Fisher Brothers?
Fisher Brothers in the amount, I'm not, I didn't want to say that word, motion to approve Fisher Brothers for the work they bid and budgeting $160,000 to do that work and the others that are projected, I-75.
Because they were the.
Low responding responsible, best bidder.
Most likely to take us to the district.
Thank you, Mr. Tinkles.
That would be the only.
Do I have a second?
I'll second if the, if the board will tell us exactly from what account the $160,000 is going.
This will come from the $450,000 plus or minus of the 2018 carryover, 2018, that was what Doug recommended about three months ago, maybe four months ago, doing it that way, and I totally agree with that.
Okay, maybe we have a motion in a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Bridge demolition and decking in Pelican Preserve.
Is this a project for Pelican Preserve that's been approved by the P-PAC, and it's some maintenance and repair and replacement? This is the project for Pelican Preserve that's been approved by the P-PAC and it's, uh, some maintenance and repair and replacement work on their bridges.
Would you like to make this motion, Mr. Guy?
I would like to make this motion, Madam Chairman, thank you. I have a question that I want answered after I have a second.
Okay.
I got a question, after I second.
You second it, may I, may I ask my question?
Yeah, I'll ask, all right.
Uh, in the, uh, on the page on the, uh, agenda item, uh, the amount is a hundred and fifty-eight, four eighty, but the bid, uh, that I'm looking at is a hundred and fifty-seven, four eighty. And I don't see any, uh, information that tells me why, why there's a different amount. Can you help me out there, or, uh, anyone, anyone?
I thought it was a typo.
It might be, I'd have to look back and it might have changed just a mo, a little bit from the, uh, P-PAC meeting, that would fall on the.
Here, I think I can answer that. Bob, ever from Pelican Preserve, and the different, the question is, but why is it one fifty-eight and one sixty-five?
No, it's one fifty-eight, the, the bid says one fifty-seven, four eighty, but the, the cover sheet says one fifty-eight.
That was just a typo.
Which is the typo?
The lower number.
No, I think.
The lower number is the bid.
I think, I think it's the other one, I think it's the one fifty-eight is the typo.
We're actually asking not to exceed a hundred and sixty, I think is what we're.
Covers it anyway.
Okay.
Well, we had a couple problems, first of all.
You got not to exceed a hundred and sixty-five.
Hundred and sixty-five.
This is for the pilings, that are, the pilings are staying, we're not doing that. The crossbeams, I think, are okay, we're doing flooring, the decking, walls, the sides, and we're gonna put track wood. We had an original bid, but it didn't include some permits, that's why, that's why this is delayed coming to you. Because then, when, once we approved it in P-PAC, we found out, oh, it's not quite enough. So, that's why when we went to our final approval at our last meeting, we bumped it to a not to exceed number because we keep getting a little ten or fifteen thousand in unforeseen or unforeseeable type of charges.
Okay, but as you go forward, you'll, you'll, you'll have in your, in your mind that, that there's a, there's a thousand dollars.
Yes, yeah, it's probably for the chairman of P-PAC.
The motion, the motion makers in agreement not to exceed a hundred and sixty-five?
Yes.
And the second agrees with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any further discussion, questions, concerns?
Question, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the, uh, what was the range of the other bids that was submitted in this work?
Bob?
I, we reviewed them, there was like three of them.
I, unless I just missed it, I didn't see that.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't have that with me, well, we looked at three different bids, uh, but once we decided on track, we looked at wood and the track wood, and we had some different composites from the same suppliers, and we just selected, this one was the most responsive.
Responsible, confident.
I think you all said a little bit.
But we had three, we had three other bidders.
Three in the benefit.
Three, three total bids?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's on that sheet, it's just part of.
I, I, I'm confused with this bid sheet, not with, I'm used to it, but it went like that. That's all.
A motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And then last is the amendment to District Management Services Agreement.
Sure, and, uh, we, we had brought that back, um, in late January to the board for consideration, extended it another year as a contract amendment, and at, at that time, we had some discussion about faster turnaround time for the meeting minutes and also some performance enhancements, uh, performance measures in the contract. And I've had several conversations with Bob Concord, he did, uh, give us a price for the three-day turnaround of the board meeting minutes of an additional cost of approximately seventy-five hundred dollars and turnaround committee meeting minutes, so that added eighty-five hundred dollars. And, uh, he said at this point, they're turning them around within five days and he didn't think it would be in the best interest of the district to pay that additional money. And, uh, we are gonna take the steps on our end to improve the recording equipment to make it, uh, easier for them to do that transcribing, so I have to, to agree with them. And in some cases, we have the meeting on Thursday and the board packets are due on Tuesday, so if you wanna have it at the very next meeting, we would incur that additional cost.
Did, did we ask, I can't remember, um, what, what the average, what's the average amount of time it takes to put a meeting book, uh, to put the minutes together?
I don't have a time and it really depends on.
The task is to listen and.
Sounds like two and a half days isn't enough, whatever it is.
That depends on the length of our meetings.
If our meeting is three hours, it would at least take you three hours to listen to the tape. You might probably have to stop, and then, you know, depending on how long it takes you to dictate, you know, so with a three-hour meeting, it could, it could, it could take double the time, it takes you six hours. So, that is about, let's say, the equivalent of two, two days. So, I'm just trying to figure out how they backed into their, uh, to the amount of resources.
Well, they have, they have a number of other clients besides us.
Yeah, well, that's, that's my point, I'm just, I'm trying to back into it a little bit and say, if it's seventy-five hundred and what that is, and they'd have to either hire another dedicated resource or, you know, it's hour allocation or prioritize ours versus someone else.
And, and that's exactly what they're doing, they're turning it around in a three-day time period and have it ready for that next board meeting minute, and they're basically putting on somebody dedicated to that and looking at that seventy-five hundred dollar cost, of course, you know, a month, that's about eight hundred dollars.
And, I'm, I'll just ask the question, because to me, I don't think it's worth the extra money because has there ever been a time when we've had an issue where, my goodness, we couldn't do something because we didn't have the minutes at the very next meeting?
Not, not that I can recall.
So, I'm not in favor of spending the extra money to have the minutes at the very next meeting. I just don't think it's necessary, but that's my humble opinion.
And, and I think with our approved recording equipment and also we're writing motions down because sometimes the way it jumps back and forth, if somebody isn't familiar with it, it's hard for them to put together the summary of the actual motion that's made. So, we're gonna be taking notes again, and then the recording equipment should facilitate it, but, uh, uh, the same way, I think it would be in our best interest to turn it around. And as far as the performance measures, we haven't dropped out, I'm talking to Mr. Concord, he sent me over a few items to consider, and I just wanted to move the contract forward, approve it, and we'll come back with another amendment for the board to consider to look at the performance measures. And a few concerns about that also, because a lot of times, when you have the performance measure and then you also have the negative, they, you're taken away if they don't make it, a lot of times, it equals the same. Um, it adds time to monitor that contract and enforce those measures. And our contract with, um, InfraMarcus, seventy-six thousand dollars a year, um, performance measures in a million-dollar contract with Mainscape, um, I think would be maybe more appropriate, look at it that way, but on this one. Um, but we are still gonna move forward and bring back a few items for the board to consider because I think it's, you know, an excellent idea and a good way to monitor the contract and make sure we're getting what we're paying for. So, um, our staff's recommending that we improve it again, we just don't wanna extend it another month or two, but we will bring back another contract amendment with some of those measures for the board to consider.
Okay, so, uh, you're asking for a motion to go ahead and approve this Fifth Amendment?
Correct, which is the, would be a year extension to their contract.
A year, okay, we have to modify it, then right now, it's two thousand and nineteen, we'll change it to two thousand and twenty? Because this was the, this was the interim amendment, just to keep alive while we negotiate other items. So, if we're not gonna modify anything else, then we make it big board of, uh, two thousand and twenty, right? Because right now, it's April twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Right, so do we need to bring this back to the second meeting in April?
No, I think if, if the board says that, if the recommended action by the manager is to approve the, uh, this amendment to extend the contract to, like, what, to April first of two thousand and twenty? Chris, is that what you're suggesting?
And originally, we were going January to January, so if we do the year term from this meeting, it would be April twenty-twenty.
If that's, does that, does that work for you from a budgetary, operational, and management perspective, that timeframe?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay.
Or is that even better?
Madam Chairman, then the, the motion that could be framed would be to approve the amendment to the District Management Services Agreement as amended, modifying the, extending the contract until April twenty, actually, April first of twenty-twenty, as opposed to April twenty-ninth, two thousand and nineteen.
Okay, and, uh.
And, and also say, and change other terms in their, in the whereas clause to match up with an extension to April first of two thousand and twenty.
Do I hear anyone make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
I'll say.
Okay. One thing that I'd like to request that the motion maker and the second are add to that is to allow for, uh, our district manager, Chris Schumaker, to execute.
That's correct, I think that was the recommendation in the, that's correct, that's how I agree.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That brings us to public hearing, so.
Can we move the supervisor comments up and eliminate that? We've got an hour.
Yeah, if you give me a five-minute break, I can, and we're still all present.
Madam Chairman, for the record, it's, uh, it's four forty, yeah.
Four forty, okay, Mr. Tinkle wanted to do supervisor comments, I said, start down there.
Start this in?
Yeah.
Uh, I'm really getting concerned relative to our flowway. Uh, I know, uh, Chris is working with DVI and trying to get both sides of I-75, uh, taken care of, but that's only what I call the inlet and the exit. We have a major liability, uh, west of the interstate, along that, uh, seven hundred, eight hundred foot run to get to the four eighty-four inch pipes, that over the years has silted up, and I am sure is nowhere near the depth that it was designed to be. And it's a part of the Area Nine and part of the Area Nine maintenance area. We can't touch that until we can figure out how we get in there and get a vendor in there and, uh, just ask, Tony, what, where do we stand on Area Nine to be able to get in there and get that work done? It'd be crazy to do to all these flowways and have everything slick as a whistle and then send that water down there and it hits that area like it's got brakes.
I'm, I'm comfortable with the district performing its maintenance operations in there, I'm just not comfortable with the district taking title to the real estate where we have questionable, from the standpoint of that real property that we own, we have a water management permit, a water management easement, uh, and, uh, there might be existing worthings in Eastman, I've had a conversation with Charles Mann on Monday, that can be assigned. So, I'm comfortable with traveling east-west, going north-south. And I think Chris has also had conversations with, uh, Lee County Utilities, with regards to their utilities and them giving us or signing a partial assignment access.
Well, this work that, that I'm contemplating is a combination of, uh, the dredging and this, uh, bank, uh, reconstruction, because those banks are horrible over there. I mean, they're just sheer drop-offs. And if it weren't, weren't for some of the rock that's in there, that limestone crushed up, uh, the road would take down. But that, that area needs to be fixed.
Time out, you, you're talking about the banks on the, on the west side of I-75?
Yes, yeah.
Why are we worried about the banks? They have rocks and trees in the, in the middle of the, of the.
Somebody running off, running off the road, you know, it's, it's very dangerous to get. Right now, we take our pickup truck down to go where we were doing samples, and it was scary, the pickup truck.
Oh, well, I'm back, yeah, I'm back here, I know what to be now.
But we take those vendors in there to bring in the equipment that's gotta go out there on the lake. The last thing I wanna do on the pond at one-thirty, the last thing I wanna do is have one of them, uh, go off the road. It's, it's dangerous up there, going back that way.
Fortunately, it all gave me, uh, Mrs. Flaherty myself, a nice tour about a month ago now, I think we were.